I would like to say to the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the City Council meeting. Let the record show that all members of the City Council are present this evening. There is a copy of the Open Meetings Act posted in the meeting room and is accessible to members of the public at any time during the course of this meeting. First item on the agenda is the Consent Agenda. All items under the Consent Agenda are considered to be routine by the City Council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a Council member or citizen so requests. First item is Item A, Approve Agenda as Submitted. Item B, Receive and Place on File All Notices Pertaining to This Meeting. Item C, Receive and Place on File All Materials Having Any Bearing on This Meeting. Item D, Approval of Minutes of Regular Meeting on February 19th, 2018, as on file in the City Clerk's Office. Item E, Approval of Minutes of Work Session Meeting on February 26th, 2018, as on file in the City Clerk's Office. Item F, Approval of Treasurer's Report of Claims in the Amount of $182,837.85. Item G, Approval of Boswell's Report of Claims in the Amount of $5,137.57. Item H, Approval of Special Designated License Application of St. Joseph Catholic Church for a special event to be held on April 15th, 2018, from 4:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. at 612 High Street, Beatrice, Nebraska. Item I, Resolution Number 6186, approving a request from the Beatrice Area Chamber of Commerce to close Highway 136, which is also known as Court Street, from Third Street to 19th Street on Saturday, June 23rd, 2018, between 8:00 a.m. until 12:00 p.m. for the Homestead Days Parade. And Item J, Resolution Number 6187, granting the Beatrice Area Chamber of Commerce their designees permission to sell or offer for sale or peddle goods, wares, or merchandise upon city property located in Charles Park, Fifth Street, between High Street and Ella Street, and Fifth Street between Ella Street and Court Street as part of the annual Homestead Days events on the dates of June 20th, 2018 through June 24th, 2018. Any item a Council member wants removed from the Consent Agenda? Rich?
I need to abstain from E.
So noted. Anyone else? Phil?
I need to abstain on H.
On H, alright. Thank you. Anyone from the public wants something removed from the Consent Agenda? Mr. Catlin?
Mayor, I would move that all the items listed under the Consent Agenda be approved, accepted, and/or ratified as presented.
Second.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Morgan, that all items under the Consent Agenda be approved. Your vote, please. That is approved 8-0. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing, a public hearing on the new application of Colleen Shonowise and John Shonowise doing business as Vintage Venue, 620 Court Street, Beatrice, Nebraska, for a Class I liquor license. We have the Chief of Police, Bruce Lang, and Chief Building Inspector, Rob Moreau. If you'd raise your right hand, gentlemen. Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes.
Thank you.
Bruce Lang, Chief of Police, and we did the standard liquor license application for this business and did not uncover anything that would preclude us from recommending it.
Rob Moreau, Chief Building Inspector, I prepared the planning and zoning report for the liquor license application, noting that all the adjacent land uses are Central Business District, and the general neighborhood and land uses is consistent with their use as well in terms of retail and restaurants. I did not see any foreseeable negative effects in there. I did add in additional comments that there is no requirement for parking in Central Business District. The business will have a capacity around 300 people, and it's my understanding the owners are working with adjacent landowners to accommodate some parking and utilize their parking.
Okay. Questions from the Council? Ted?
Bruce, sorry, Bruce. So you've got this one that's Class I, the next one that we're going to talk about is Class C, next one after that's Class D. Can you just tell everybody what the difference is between these classes?
If you don't mind.
I don't...
Oh! This came out earlier today.
Can you answer that, please?
Well, I have, I know the answer. I just want, I'm just trying to... Yeah. Okay. So tonight we have what? We have a Class I, a C, and a D. So a C is beer, wine, and distilled spirits for consumption on and off-premise, in the original package only. A D is beer, wine, distilled spirits for consumption off-premise, in the original package only. And an I is beer, wine, distilled spirits for consumption on-premise. So this one, the Shonowises are looking for a Class I, which would be consumption on-premise.
I just didn't want anybody to say, "Is there going to sell beer out of there?" I just...
Thank you. No problem.
Any other questions from the Council? Anyone from the public? Mr. Catlin?
Mayor, I would move that the public hearing be closed at 7:05 p.m.
Second. Moved by Catlin, seconded by Bilzbuck, that the public hearing be closed at 7:05 p.m. Your vote, please. That is approved 8-0.
Mayor, I would move that the new application of Colleen Shonowise and John Shonowise doing business as Vintage Venue, 620 Court Street, Beatrice, Nebraska, for a Class I liquor license be recommended to the Nebraska Liquor Control Commission for approval.
Second.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Morgan, that the application of Colleen Shonowise and John Shonowise be approved. Any further discussion? Your vote, please. That is approved 8-0. Next is a public hearing on the new application of Staub PH Units LLC doing business as Pizza Hut of Beatrice, 2400 North Sixth Street, Beatrice, Nebraska, for a Class C liquor license. Gentlemen are still under oath?
Thank you. Pizza Hut located at 2400 North Sixth Street, same type of a background was done, and this is for a Class C liquor license, and we did not recover anything that would preclude us from recommending this one as well.
Planning and zoning report showed that adjacent land uses are general commercial on the northwest and south sides, on the east side is just ag land. Neighborhood businesses and land uses are consistent as well. Additional comments on here is establishment has maintained a liquor license for several years, and this is just an upgrade in their license.
Okay. Any questions, gentlemen? From the public? Mr. Catlin?
Mayor, I would move that the public hearing be closed at 7:07 p.m.
Second. Moved by Catlin, seconded by Claybaum, that the public hearing be closed at 7:07 p.m. And your vote, please. That is approved 8-0.
Mayor, I would move that the new application of Staub PH Units LLC doing business as Pizza Hut of Beatrice, 2400 North Sixth Street, Beatrice, Nebraska, for a Class C liquor license be recommended to the Nebraska Liquor Control Commission for approval.
Second.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Cook, that the application of Staub PH Units LLC doing business as Pizza Hut be approved. Any further discussion? From the public? Alright, your vote, please. And that is approved 8-0. Next is a public hearing on the new application of Casey's Retail Company doing business as Casey's General Store, 65, 1522 South Sixth Street, Beatrice, Nebraska, for a Class D liquor license. Again, I repeat, you're still under oath?
Thank you. Again, this was a standard liquor license application for what was, what would be commonly referred to as Casey's South, and nothing was precluded, or nothing was uncovered that would preclude us from recommending this one as well.
Zoning report just indicated that north and east are general commercial zones, west is urban family, which is our three, and south is general industrial. Don't see any negative neighborhood effects there. Again, additional comments, establishment has maintained a liquor license for several years, and this is an upgrade.
Questions from the Council? From the audience?
Mayor, I would move that the public hearing be closed at 7:08 p.m.
Second.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Cook, that the public hearing be closed at 7:08 p.m. Your vote, please. That is approved 8-0.
Mayor, I would move that the new application of Casey's Retail Company doing business as Casey's General Store, 65, 1522 South Sixth Street, Beatrice, Nebraska, for a Class D liquor license be recommended to the Nebraska Liquor Control Commission for approval.
Second.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Cook, that the new application of Casey's Retail Company, DBA, Casey's General Store, 65, be approved. Your vote, please. That is approved 8-0. Next is a public hearing on the new application of Casey's Retail Company doing business as Casey's General Store, 1744, located at 1500 East Court Street, Beatrice, Nebraska, for a Class D liquor license. Gentlemen?
Again, this is the standard application. This is for Casey's on East Court, and nothing was uncovered again in this one that would preclude us from recommending it.
Planning and zoning report showed that it's an unlimited commercial zone, east, west, and south adjacent properties are also LC, and north is residential commercial. But again, the uses are consistent and compliant with Casey's. Establishment has maintained a liquor license for several years, and again, this is an upgrade.
Thank you. Any questions? Anyone from the public? Alright, Mr. Catlin?
Mayor, I would move that the public hearing be closed at 7:10 p.m.
Second.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Morgan, that the public hearing be closed at 7:10 p.m. And your vote, please. That's approved 8-0.
Mayor, I would move that the new application of Casey's Retail Company doing business as Casey's General Store, 1744, 1500 East Court Street, Beatrice, Nebraska, for a Class D liquor license be recommended to the Nebraska Liquor Control Commission for approval.
Second.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Bilzbuck, that the new application of Casey's Retail Company doing business as Casey's General Store, 1744, located at 1500 East Court Street be approved. Any further discussion? From the audience? Your vote, please. And that is approved 8-0. Next is a public hearing on the new application of Casey's Retail Company doing business as Casey's General Store, 1784, located at 806 West Court Street, Beatrice, Nebraska, for a Class D liquor license. Gentlemen?
Again, this is for what's normally referred to as Casey's West on West Court, and again, nothing was uncovered during this that would preclude us from recommending it.
Planning and zoning showed that it's a general commercial zone, also surrounded in all four directions with general commercial properties and zonings. Again, establishment has maintained a liquor license for several years, this being an upgrade.
Any questions, gentlemen? From the audience? Mr. Catlin?
Mayor, I would move that the public hearing be closed at 7:12 p.m.
Second.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Cur, that the public hearing be closed at 7:12 p.m. Your vote, please. That's approved 8-0.
Mayor, I would move that the new application of Casey's Retail Company doing business as Casey's General Store, 1784, 806 West Court Street, Beatrice, Nebraska, for a Class D liquor license be recommended to the Nebraska Liquor Control Commission for approval.
Second.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Cur, that the new application of Casey's Retail Company doing business as Casey's General Store, 1784, located at 806 West Court Street be approved. Your vote, please. That is approved 8-0. And finally, public hearing on the new application of Casey's Retail Company doing business as Casey's General Store, 2702, located at 1116 North Sixth Street, Beatrice, Nebraska, for a Class D liquor license.
This is for Casey's General Store, known as Casey's North. We've informed them that they can't add any other stores in town because we've gone east, west, north, and south, and we wouldn't know how to, we wouldn't know how to find them.
What about central?
That was a joke. Anyway, nothing was uncovered during this that would preclude us from recommending this one as well. Thank you.
Planning and zoning is existing in a general commercial zone, and north and west is also general commercial, east is residential commercial, and south is limited commercial. So it is consistent in compliance. And again, lastly, establishment has maintained a liquor license for several years, and this is an upgrade.
Any questions of the chief or the chief building inspector? Alright, Mr. Catlin, close the public hearing?
Mayor, I would move that the public hearing be closed at 7:14 p.m.
Second.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Bilzbuck, that the public hearing be closed at 7:14 p.m. Your vote, please. That is approved 8-0. Thank you, gentlemen.
Mayor, I would move that the new application of Casey's Retail Company doing business as Casey's General Store, 2702, 1116 North Sixth Street, Beatrice, Nebraska, for a Class D liquor license be recommended to the Nebraska Liquor Control Commission for approval.
Second.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Cook, that the new application of Casey's Retail Company doing business as Casey's General Store, 2702, located at 1116 North Sixth Street be approved. Any further discussion? And your vote, please. And that is approved 8-0. Next item is a public hearing for the purpose of considering adoption of Plan Modification Z to the redevelopment plan for Redevelopment Area Number Two, Hydo Properties, 301 Court Street, Redevelopment Project.
Yes, so as is indicated, this is for the buildings at 301 Court Street. Those who are not familiar with that property have probably seen the reformation or the change in that's going on with that property as we speak. This is owned by Hydo Properties. They are looking to use TIF, or Tax Increment Financing, on this project. A little bit thing that's unusual about this project that we haven't done in the past, the portion that's being TIF-ed is just the elevator. They're going to install a passenger elevator on the inside of the building. It is an eligible expense. That's the only items being used or tax increment financing on this, on this project. When you look at the valuations of the building, pre-construction and post-construction, we know what it will be post-construction just by them occupying the building as a commercial building. What we could not get out of the county assessor was a definite number of, after they see all of the improvements that are being made, what that valuation will be. It's just difficult to know for sure. And so the numbers you see in your packet are very conservative numbers of what we think TIF will be for them as they move forward. This has been before the CRA twice already. They've recommended both times. Planning and zoning has looked at it and found it's in compliance with the comprehensive plan. They made their recommendation in favor of it. CRA, as part of their evaluation, has looked at the cost-benefit analysis on this project, found it to be favorable as well. We've mailed notices out to all the taxing entities for them to have the opportunity to be here tonight to have any questions about this project. So other than that, it comes before you. Assuming you guys approve it tonight, it'll go back to CRA. Once we have a redevelopment agreement signed with Hydo's property, we'll take the CRA, have them approve it, and then they'll be allowed to start on that portion of the project.
Ted?
I don't have any problem with the project. Only question I have, we've got several, we've done several of the TIF things in the past. We have a few of them on here tonight. My only question is, how do we, how do we, we, we're not, we're just voting on it, how does you, how do you determine the length of the TIF program? Where some of these, you know, they're not all set, same number of years on the payback. So how's that determined?
A lot of times what we do is we sit down and we evaluate the amount of TIF eligible expenses they'll have, what we believe this will generate for ad valorem taxes after it's completed, basically the increase in taxes every year afterwards. Then you look and you bring that back to a net present value, what it is today. How many years are they going to need? Are they going to need five years to pay off their tax-eligible expenses? Do they need seven? A lot of times you'll try to add one more because the first year, remember you pay your real estate taxes a year in the rears? So usually the first year's a low year. So those are the calculations you figure out when trying to determine if it's five years, 10 years, or 15 years.
Well, I've argued this in the past, and we've had some other developments that were offered 10 years or 15 years, and I, you know, I've asked to have those things shortened, free up a little more of the TIF money, have, have an opportunity, have more people involved. And so that was really where my question was based. I just wanted to know if it was simply what they asked, you know, this is what they asked for, this is what we gave them, or is there some give and take on that as a negotiation part on our, on our side?
There is negotiations on our side, whether it be this buyer, the CRA body, if somebody would want to step forward and say, "We think this project's only a 10-year project." Now, TIF is up to 15 years. If the tax revenue comes in early and pays it off in 13, it's done. The developer doesn't get to keep any of the additional cash. I don't think that happens.
And we've had those.
Right. We have one that'll get paid off early this year. I believe that they make their June payment, they'll have that project paid off probably about five years early, and so it'll roll off.
Like I said, don't have a problem with it, just had the questions about it.
Any other discussion? From the audience? Mr. Catlin?
Mayor, I would move that the public hearing be closed at 7:19 p.m.
Second.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Bilzbuck, that the public hearing be closed at 7:19 p.m. Your vote, please. That is approved 8-0. Next is a public hearing for the purpose of considering adoption of Plan Modification AA to the redevelopment plan for Redevelopment Area Number Four, Exmark Development Project.
As, as the name indicates, this is for Exmark and their acquisition that they've announced here recently. Most of the TIF eligible expense in this, in this project is for the site acquisition of the new building. There is some additional expenses there. They're going to pave a parking lot, they're going to do some utility work, there's some of that, but a bulk of it is the site acquisition. We are, have taken this to CRA twice, just like the other projects have been through there. CRA has done their cost-benefit analysis, looking at this project. They made a recommendation to do this project as it moves forward. Planning and zoning has looked at this project. They recommended that it's in favor of the comprehensive plan. It's industrial today, it'll be industrial tomorrow, so they're happy with it. Again, we've sent notices out to all their taxing entities for them to be here as part of this project. We have met with the county assessor, worked on evaluation, pre and post-construction. Again, this is currently a set for a 15-year payback. That again is in limbo because we're working on what the valuation will be after they're done making their improvements. That's the only, the question. We know there will be a bump initially, year one, but how big of a bump as Exmark continues to make improvements to that building, will that number continue to climb?
Anyone? From the audience?
Mayor, I would move that the public hearing be closed at 7:21 p.m.
Second.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Claybaum, that the public hearing be closed at 7:21 p.m. And your vote, please. That is approved 8-0. Next is a public hearing for the purpose of considering adoption of Plan Modification BB to the redevelopment plan for Redevelopment Area Number One, Teeman Redevelopment Project.
So this is for the Teemans. They're looking at building a spec building north of Precise Fab. If you're familiar with the industrial park at all, Precise Fab owns the lot just north of them. That's theirs. Teemans don't want to build on the next lot north, but the next one. So you would take Precise, go two lots to the north is where they would look to build this, this building at. It's 38,000 square feet. Again, right now it would be a spec building. They would look to bring tenants into that facility. This project has also been to the CRA twice. They've done their cost-benefit analysis. They found it was a favorable result and passed to recommend this item onto this board. Planning and zoning has looked at it. They found it to be in favor of the comprehensive plan. Again, it's industrial park, they're looking to build an industrial spec building. They said it met that comprehensive requirement there. Notices have been sent out to all the taxing entities for them to have an opportunity to be here tonight, ask questions. The valuation of this building, we've got a pretty good valuation from the county assessor's office. Most of the tax financing eligible expenses will be some site acquisition, grading work, site prep, maybe some parking lots outside, some of those types of things. As you recall, most of the infrastructure was put in recently with the hatchery and putting out to the north of it. So those types of expenses would be what we would look to use the tax increment financing for in this project.
Questions? Excuse me, questions? Anyone from the public? Mr. Catlin?
Mayor, I would move that the public hearing be closed at 7:23 p.m.
Second.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Morgan, that the public hearing be closed at 7:23 p.m. And your vote, please. That is approved 8-0. Next is Item Four, Resolution, Resolution Number 6188, adopting Plan Modification Z to the Redevelopment Plan for Redevelopment Area Two, that's the Hydo Properties located at 301 Court Street, Redevelopment Project.
Mayor, I would move that Resolution Number 6188 be passed and approved.
Second.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Cook, that Resolution Number 6188 be passed and adopted. Any further discussion?
The only thing I would note as you read through this resolution, they all read the same, but they note what redevelopment district we're in. It notes when planning and zoning had their meetings, it notes when CRA had their meetings, it notes what actions they took, what recommendations they made. So it lays out a very good timetable as you look back to kind of know how this, this item has progressed. And then it has in there the other statutory requirements that the legislature wants us to have on these tax increment financing projects and proposals. Ultimately, the final step again is the redevelopment agreement, which once it's negotiated and signed, will be brought before the CRA for their approval.
Any questions? Anyone from the audience? Your vote, please. That is approved 8-0. Resolution Number 6188 has been passed and adopted. Next is Resolution Number 6189, adopting Plan Modification AA to the Redevelopment Plan for Redevelopment Area Four, that's the Exmark Redevelopment Project.
Mayor, I would move that Resolution Number 6189 be passed and adopted.
Second.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Bilzbuck, that Resolution Number 6189 be passed and adopted. Further discussion, gentlemen? Audience? And your vote, please. And that is approved 8-0. Resolution Number 6189 has been passed and adopted. Next is Resolution Number 6190, adopting Plan Modification BB to the Redevelopment Plan for Redevelopment Area Number One, the Teeman Redevelopment Project.
Mayor, I would move that Resolution Number 6190 be passed and adopted.
Second.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Cook, that Resolution Number 6190 be passed and adopted. Further discussion?
The only thing I would note, and I probably should have mentioned it earlier, but if for some reason we don't reach a redevelopment agreement with the developer on a project, we simply don't take that to CRA, they don't pass it, the TIF never gets started, nothing ever happens. Probably should have mentioned that to start with, but in the event that that doesn't happen, we've had it happen before, we've gotten this far with projects before and just never gotten the redevelopment agreement signed for one reason or another. Very rarely does it happen, but if it does, that's what happens with these projects.
Any further discussion? Anyone from the public? Alright, your vote, please. And that is approved 8-0. Resolution Number 6190 has been passed and adopted. Next is Resolution Number 6191, granting permission to the Beatrice Area Arts Council, permission to serve alcoholic beverages in the Carnegie Building on Saturday, April 14th, 2018, from 2:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m.
Mayor, I would move that Resolution Number 6191 be passed and adopted.
Second.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Claybaum, that Resolution Number 6191 be passed and adopted. Tobias?
As we indicated in your packets, the Beatrice Area Arts Council has come to us. They'd like to have, I don't know if the correct terms, a showing or an unveiling, but they want to display some artwork, invite some individuals into the Carnegie Building to enjoy the artwork. I believe it's invitation only is the way they've got it set up. Our current city code allows them to have alcohol in the Carnegie Building, but they have to have your permission before they do so. Some of you may be asking about a SDL. Why is one not required? Again, if it's a private event and it's not publicized to the point where people can walk in off the street, they're not required to have an SDL. That's why you do not see an SDL on your, on here tonight.
Anyone from the public? Alright, gentlemen, your vote, please. And that is approved 7-1 with Councilman Party voting against. Resolution Number 6191 has been passed and adopted. Next is an ordinance, ordinance authorizing the issuance, sale, and delivery by the city of its limited tax obligation Public Safety Bonds, Series 2018, in the aggregate principal amount of $170,000 for the purpose of financing the costs of acquiring certain public safety equipment and apparatus.
Mayor, I would move that said ordinance be given, Number 18-003. The title therefore be approved, the rules be suspended, and said ordinance be read by number only three times tonight.
Second.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Morgan, that the ordinance be given, Number 18-003. Title thereof approved, rules suspended, and the ordinance be read by number only three times tonight. A motion to suspend the rules is not debatable. Your vote, please. And that is approved 8-0. Ordinance Number 18-003 by number the first time, ordinance Number 18-003 by number the second time, and ordinance Number 18-003 by number... second time, and ordinance number 18-003 by number the third and final time.
Mayor, I would move that ordinance number 18-003 be passed and approved.
Second.
Move by Catlin, seconded by Bilzbach, that ordinance number 18-003 be passed and approved. Tobias?
Oh, a couple of months ago, we brought before you a reimbursement resolution, was where we started to talk about this project, but essentially the city's going to be issuing some public safety debt obligations here. They're $170,000 in valuation, they're three years, so I think if you look in your packet, we're looking at interest rates of 1.65 to 2% interest rates over the life of these bonds. We're using these bonds to pay for certain things that are public safety related, such as, if you remember, we had a vehicle, a police car that was wrecked here recently. We had insurance, but there's always a shortfall between what insurance pays and what a new car costs, so we're covering that. We had some new 911 software that we have purchased. Originally, we had decided to buy that out of the general fund, since we're issuing these, we're going to use this money to help our general fund, cash reserves as well. And then also, once we had those 911 software coming in, originally we were told that the servers we had were adequate. Once the installers came on site, they determined that our servers needed to be upgraded, and so we need to acquire some additional servers. Servers are quite expensive these days, and so we're looking to use that money to also be purchased with the result of this public safety debt.
Questions? Anyone? Audience? Your vote, please. And that is approved eight zero. Ordinance number 18-003 has been passed and adopted. Next item on the agenda is the public forum. Purpose of the public forum is for the presentation of an item by the general public to the city council for consideration at a later date. No discussion or action will be taken by the city council at this time. Does anyone from the council have anything for the public forum? Does the audience have anything for the public forum? I have one thing. The local band or group here in Beatrice is playing with the Omaha Symphony on March the 13th. They invited all city council members and the mayor to this event. If you've not participated or heard the Omaha Symphony along with the Beatrice Regional Orchestra, it will be something I think that would be rewarding for everybody, so if you can attend, that'd really be great. If you can't attend, you've got some tickets, try to find somebody that can use them, okay? You bet. All right, next item on the agenda is discussion regarding legislative bill 518, workforce housing, something that we talked about a week ago, and we're going to bring it up again and have some unanswered questions.
I think maybe to start with is just kind of a broad overview. We have the, we actually have people in the audience tonight, and we have the media here, and we also have the individuals walking in at home, maybe just give a background of what LB 518 is. If you recall, it's a bill that was passed last year in the legislature, they set aside some cash into a opportunity for individuals to apply for a grant through Department of Economic Development for workforce housing. You can apply for up to a million dollars worth of grant funds. NIFA has come in and said they would match your dollars for the first $250,000, and the grant requires a one-for-one match. So, if the city put in $250,000, NIFA would match $250,000. You now have half a million dollars, which you would apply to DED for half a million dollars, you to walk away with a total of a $1 million revolving loan fund from your initial $250,000 investment. Those funds would have to be used for housing, workforce housing, which is defined as single family residents up to $275,000, or multiple family living units up to $200,000 for each living unit. So, and they can be used for things such as building new homes, rehabbing existing homes, second floor living in the downtown area for infrastructure, there are a number of different things they can be used for with that regard, so. With that, we were, talked the last time about the opportunity of maybe applying for some of these funds. We had some questions after we left the last meeting, which I emailed, got some answers back from Tom Bliss, the executive director at SIN. I emailed them out to see if anybody could not get them or want a hard copy of them.
I'm reading them now. He, he pulled them up.
Evy?
I didn't see my email before I came to the meeting.
I was reading it as we went along today.
Anybody else want a hard copy?
Sure. He's, he's ready.
Joe? The application must be submitted by March 30th. So the timeline's pretty short.
It's not a, I mean, the application, quite honestly, for DED's applications is relatively short, but I think a lot of the exhibits they want are quite lengthy. You have to run this revolving loan through, fund through an NDO or nonprofit, what's the exact term, Walker, do you know what it is? Nonprofit, nonprofit development organization, is what it has to be run through. The city Beatrice is not an NDO, Engage is not an NDO. So therefore, we are not authorized to apply for these funds, that's why you have to go through somebody like SIN to apply for them. And we cannot get set up as an NDO between now and March 31st.
I know the concern is, I guess it's March 31st, the concern is that this is short notice, short timing, but it's a tremendous return on our investment if we want to set up a revolving loan fund.
I really like it. To parlay $250,000 into a million dollars is awesome, we do that every day. But I was, I was hoping maybe Walker would, might have some more thoughts, or, please?
Kind of looks like he's been put on the spot.
Come on up, Walker.
Name an address, please.
Walker Zalkowski, 831 Ashley Avenue, Cortland. Questions?
Any more thoughts from our last conversation?
No, I may still think it's a good idea, as Tobias said, we're not, we're not an NDO, we're not set up to administer these things, and so having an opportunity for SIN to apply for these on our behalf and being in a relatively small pool of other communities that would be saying where these funds go, I think that we would have an opportunity to, I think we're going to have more opportunities to go after these funds in some of these other communities that would be our initial partners, so. As Rick had said, it's, it's a, it's a pretty easy way to take $250,000 and walk away with a million, and I think you could even argue that you're going to potentially more than a million by the time all these other communities make this fund even larger, and if they don't have projects that they can use them on, hopefully we do.
Ted?
I like the idea, I'm, and I kind of echo Rick, I like the theory of the project in general. I'm still struggling with would we be better off to be standalone with this instead of, and then try to maybe parlay it into a smaller fund? I, I just keep sitting back looking at this, that you would be competing with the other communities in the pool. And since everyone has a vote, so scenario that Beatrice is, say, the largest community, and you have four of the communities that are small, you know, do they, does their vote stay with the smaller communities and outvote you because they think you, you know, because you think, they think you already have what you need? I mean, does our dollars end up someplace else? Are you, those, I'm conflicted because of that. Conflicted because it's a group, and I, and you, and you don't know what the agreement is between the other communities, and I, you're, you're still competing. So how do you, how do you, how do you make me feel better about that, Walker, so I'm going to vote for this, because at this point, I'm not.
There, it's obvious that, that some of this money could be spent in other places.
Okay.
But I still think we're going to have more of those opportunities here, and the whole name of the game is to make that fund grow, right? There's no, there's no, there's no grants out of this program, and so, I mean, it's all, it's all cash, it's lent out, it comes back, and so that group, whoever you would choose, I would imagine one of you would be the representative, or Tobias, or somebody would be the representative that would represent Beatrice, you're going to be looking at those saying, where am I going to get my greatest rate of return? That puts it on us, I mean, you're talking to that economic development, right? We're the Cowboys that are always going out and trying to get these crazy things, but this is a great opportunity, and, and maybe that's where we come out from different, two different points, like I, I see just a ton of opportunity here, do I have all the answers to it? Not necessarily, but that's, I think, the fun thing about our job and the fun thing about this, about LB 518 is, I think we can win a lot of these battles.
And I don't disagree with that, we seem to be winning, we, you collectively, us collectively, seem to be winning our share of them. So, on the email that I'm reading, the hard copy of, had a community today decided not to go. So let's say in a year, two years, this thing starts, can they come back in? Can you, can you add to it? I mean, it, so my question is, is can we sit on the sideline for a year to see how this is developing and then get in?
No, you can't get in later, but the, the only question I think we asked was, can you get out? And I think the answer was, you only got your initial investment out. So if somebody would happen to leave, you basically get their $750,000, or I guess 500 or whatever it's going to be in, 500 and plus, whatever portion of the 250 again.
Okay.
Rich? You got a question?
Yeah. To set up, if you've got the other four communities, or three, or whatever it is, they will form a board and that board will meet, will they, is there some type of cap that we could put on to where we would make sure that each community every year could get something, or, or is this just strictly down to, like Ted was saying, the votes of, you know?
Once you, whoever decides to contribute and be part of this regional application, what I envision is those communities then will get together and develop the rules that they'll play by moving forward. And if we want to look to push for rules that say you can only get back what you invested, or you only get a project every third year, or whatever those rules are, that's the time that you would set those things up. Just like you do anytime you set up a new business, the first thing you do is you set the rules up, what are you going to do as you break up and, and fall apart? You set them up today while we get along, while we talk to each other, we don't try to figure them out afterwards, after we're mad at each other. I think those are the types of things you would sit down and have in those initial conversations about, how are you going to structure this?
Okay, if, if we would decide, each community would decide to put in $100,000, let's just figure that, then a year or two down the line, it, it's rolling, and we want to put in another 150,000 or whatever each community, is that possible with the matches?
With the matches, no. One time for the match, it's a one-time application. Now, if, if all the communities agreed, four years from now, it's a great thing, they all want to pony up an extra $100,000, I don't know why you couldn't do that, but you're not going to get the match, you're not going to get the, no.
Okay.
So much money in the pool, and I think the legislature put in under LB 518, a million, or $7 million. There's a lot of communities that are after these dollars, and once the fund's gone, it's gone. Bob?
I guess that's one of my first questions, is there is, there is a limit, and there's probably more people requesting these than what is allowed.
It's what it sounds like.
I did read part of the bill too, and he's right, it does give us some advantage as a regional group. I mean, that's one of the things they're really looking for. I wasn't really thrilled about the first year expenses. I think it's one of those things that's going to take time. I think we have to build it up, and I think that if we decide to do this, I think it's very important that whoever we select to be on the board knows kind of what our feelings are, because that's where I think it is all going to come to fruition, is, is those five people or 10 people in the room, they're going to drop the rules. So, it's a great opportunity, but I, you know, I think that you also have to be a little bit of caution.
Rick? You know, we have, we have, what, a little over three weeks to go before you have to have your application, and I'm, you know, reading, reading through all this, I'm, I'm a little, little disappointed with, that they're not answering all of the questions all the way, and that's kind of disappointing when you only have three-plus weeks to go. I wish that they would have had been able to answer all these questions a little bit more thoroughly. I, I still think it would be great for Beatrice though, that we go ahead and, and put as much money as we can into this.
The only thing I can say there is, as a grant writer, it's not uncommon, you don't know all the answers when you're filling the grant out. I mean, some of those things are just going to kind, kind of into play as you do the project and it moves forward, whether that's, you know, making some improvements at Hannibal Park, or setting up a loan agreement. As you walk through it, you're going to learn new things, and a lot of these rules, like I said, are going to be developed by whoever decides to be participating in this, this grant opportunity, so.
Phil?
I'm, I'm in favor of this, it is a little scary that we're going out with three other communities or four other communities, but to me, if we do this, we're all going to be in the same boat, we've got to play together, we're going to be on the same team, I don't see why we, one would try to slit the throat of the other one to, you know, so I think we're all going to get together and, you know, because if we, one person does it to one, they're going to, you know, everybody will jump on and do the same to others, so I think, you know, as a team, we would be in good shape here, so.
As I understand it, we're on a, there's like four or five different communities that would, that would be our consortium, is that correct? Possibly five communities, and then we'd all have a, each community would have a vote on that board. And I, I think it's project-driven, it's not the size of the community, it's not, let's gang up on the big guy, I don't think that's what we're looking for, I think it's, I think it's project-driven. Bob?
And, correct me if I'm wrong, I think last week, or last time with the work session, we talked about it being 840 money, and in some respects, that's probably a better guarantee than some of the 840 money that's been loaned in years past.
I think that's a breakthrough statement.
But just remember, when it comes to money, it is cutthroat, and they, they do like to, to get the money.
Yes, Ted?
I agree with Bob, two things. First of all, the 840 money, yeah, it hasn't always been well-spent, trust me, I railed against some of it, didn't always get it at my very part, but the, the other thing I was going to ask you, is, as I read through this, is, you were talking about, I, I thought the terms of this, about how it was spent from the bill, were boilerplate. I thought that was, did I misunderstand that? I, from Bob's original question? When you were talking about the
Return?
Yeah, the return
That's the first year to get, there's, there's a number of setup expenses.
Right.
Legal expenses, and I think that's a, I think that's an expense that's probably boilerplate, but how the money is distributed amongst the communities is the, the group thing.
Yeah, see, I thought that was a given as well as I read it, maybe I misunderstood it.
And I didn't glean that from the meeting yesterday, I gleaned that from his responses here, when he talked about the first year, there would be a little higher expenditure than the 10,000 he was kind of estimating when he sat in his chair.
Well, I, I guess, and as I read that, I thought, okay, the first year could be 10,000, but I would have, I would have thought, if I'm administering this, if this begins at a million and somewhere down the road, it has grown to seven or eight million, that my fee to administrate it would, would grow with that. And, and he's saying that it's higher here and then shrinking later, and, and that seems like a conflict to me as well. You know, without having a guarantee of what this is costing us annually, I, I struggle with it.
That's, that's the one answer that really kind of bothered me.
If this was you in this situation, wouldn't your fee increase as the, the money you're managing increases?
Yeah, it depends on the contract, I mean, that's the hard part.
And I, and I thought that was written into it, and obviously it's not. I must have misread that, or didn't understand it.
As the grant administration, if it's strictly by the hour, the number of hours you put in, whether you're overseeing a $10,000 grant or a million dollar grant, a lot of times aren't different. I can just tell you from the grants that I've administered, the paperwork's the same, and so it might be the same here. I don't know what his reporting requirements ultimately will be, but I mean, that's a thing to keep in mind.
But you can understand my concern.
Any other questions? Concerns?
One other thing, because it kind of came up about, just with the partners and things, and I was thinking about this, there's a lot of push, not only in Nebraska, but just all around the country, to think more regionally, and this is really kind of a chance for us to jump in that game and be a regional partner. But I was at lunch with someone today, and they were talking about, they're hiring someone else for Fairberry, and they had somebody that worked down in Kansas, and they're trying to find a place to live, but we see this, you know, with all of our manufacturers and with so many of our companies, people travel from a long ways away, so if a housing development or something happens to go in Auburn, or go in Geneva, and those people commute here, I mean, I think just more opportunities and more housing that goes up regionally, whether we, if we get it, that's great, but if not, it still helps everyone, you know, it's just kind of a rising tide raises all ships, so, you know, if, if the other communities are doing well too, I mean, it could still end up helping some of our local guys by having a place where, you know, a spouse, they can find a middle place to live and still get to their jobs.
Any other comments? I think the next thought process is, how much money would we put into the pool?
I think you saw the, what he recommended, or it was a minimum of about 100,000, the max would be a million dollars. max would be a million dollars, but that's the maximum amount of the grant total, so, I mean, if you're going to do a regional pool, I don't see you putting in that much.
And it would come from LB eight forty dollars, and by the end of this year, we should have in the neighborhood of 600,000 in the LB eight forty fund.
Wouldn't we have to wait, wouldn't we have to wait to see what the other communities are going to put in? Wouldn't, wouldn't we just match what they put in, or they, everybody puts in the same amount of money?
I don't think so. I didn't pick up as indication that everybody had to put in the same amount of money.
You mean, we'd put in 200, say, we'd put in 250,000, and another littler community would only put in 100,000, and they're going to have the same vote and everything else as we've got?
I, I think those are things you would ultimately decide when you got together and set the rules up, if it made a difference or not, but I don't know what everybody's put in, and Walker, do you know?
I think I'm hearing 250 from everyone else.
That's what, that's what Tim Bliss said, Tom Bliss said.
But if there would happen to be a fifth, or whatever, and then they, they don't want to go over a million dollars, and so it would be 200 each, and then I, I think, this never really got answered, but if they end up having a bunch of applications, and they have to scale back everyone in the state's applications, and so maybe you didn't get the full million dollars and it dropped to 800, I think they would just scale back all the investors, you know, percentage-wise. 250, though, I think is, is the mark you want to be at.
Gentlemen? 250. Kind of agree?
What we look at doing then is, we would notify SIN that that's where we think we are at, we'd come back to you for a formal vote in two weeks.
And let them start the application process?
Yes.
Maybe you have some more answers?
Yeah, again, if you have additional questions you want, email them, call me, text me, whatever, and we'll work on getting some more answers to continue, just kind of hone in those ans, those questions and answers as we move forward.
Why isn't this Tom Bliss here tonight?
He was here last week.
He was here last week?
Okay.
Just one other thing, just, SIN has been a really good partner for us lately too, and if you've seen the legislation, or I guess the federal legislation, these opportunity zones, we do have two that qualify.
Ted, Ted, hang on here.
I was going to say, just, just plugging SIN a little bit, because they have been very helpful to us lately too, but there's this new program, the opportunity zones, the federal opportunity zones, and Nebraska gets to designate 25% of their tracks that qualify, and we do have a couple in Beatrice, and Tom and his team, they are, they are applying for those on our behalf, and I, so I just got a call, I was on a call today with his entire team, they're doing all the work for us, and so, I mean, I think kind of my philosophy in work is, you know, do a little bit of work before you start to see some of those benefits, and Tom is doing that, so, he's never mentioned, like, I'll do this for you if you do this, but I just want you to know that they are helpful, they answer when we call, and, you know, so far, Tom has redeveloped this team of folks, and they're very quality people, so I would trust them with, with this 518.
$250,000.
I mean, they're under just as much scrutiny as anybody else, I mean, it's not, they're not going to run away with it.
Rich?
Just one more question, would, when we would apply for these funds, if, if we get it all set up, would it be once a year that we apply for it, or per?
It's one time.
It's one time.
Okay, like, we've got two or three different...
So, one-time application?
No, 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 I mean, when it's all set up, and the money's there, and the board's set up and everything, we've got a contractor here that wants to do a development, and we ask for money there, then three, four months down the line, we have another developer, can we go back two or three times, or do we do this once a year?
Probably not going to like my answer, but it's going to depend on what rules we set up when we form the investment club, because those are going to be things that we look at doing, do we set up as a December first deadline, do we have a revolving calendar? I mean, grants all do it different ways, I, I think that's just what the committee would decide how they want to handle it. I, personally, I'd probably push for a deadline sometime in the winter period, so it's all in place by spring, and so your developers are often, and ready to construct summer and fall, but it just depends on who you have in the room to negotiate those terms.
See, I almost look at it as probably going to be a quarterly-type thing, because you have developers every quarter coming in saying, hey, I got another great idea, so.
Could do that as well, you could do it like you do Beatrice Plus and everything else, where it's once a quarter, and if you have something, great, and if you don't, you just don't have a meeting.
Why don't you guys formulate something to bring back to us for our next meeting? We haven't spent any money yet, but at least we've got a proposal that's going to be on the table and we can consider further.
It feels like we have, Stan.
Oh, we haven't. Our next meeting is going to be March nineteenth, two thousand eighteen, right here in these chambers, and then there'll be a work session at the end of the month, on March twenty-sixth. Mr. Catlin, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mayor, I would move that the meeting be adjourned at 7:54 PM.
Move by Catlin, seconded by Billsbach, that the meeting be adjourned at 7:54 PM, and your vote please, and that is approved eight zero. Thank you, gentlemen. Thanks for everyone's attendance tonight.